Shall we go ahead and get started?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our work session for Monday, December 10th. We're here tonight to hear an update on downtown Superior. Why don't we do a quick round of introductions since we've got some new folks at the table. Clint Folsom, Mayor.
Neil Shaw, Trustee.
Laura Swichinsky, Trustee.
Bill Jenks, RC Superior.
Jim Kurtzfelden, RC Superior.
Ryan Lefkowitz, RC Superior.
Matt Hayley, Town Manager.
David Harper, Planning and Commission.
Mark Laces, Mayor for Town.
Ken Lish, Trustee.
Sandy Hamerly, Trustee.
Kevin Ryan, Trustee.
Awesome. Welcome. Thanks for coming in for an update. Of course. Just let you be. Okay.
So, part of this will be the general kind of quarterly update that I generally give, walking you through the project, what's been done to date, what's next on the calendar, and kind of potential target dates for what we see moving forward. Before we get into that, we wanted to kind of take a step back, knowing that three of the seven members are new to the board, and just try to take an opportunity to reacquaint everybody to the existing PD, into the project, talk about vision, talk about the existing approved PD. Ryan Lefkowitz is here from Avanti Properties. They're the capital partner on the project. So Ranch Capital originally found the project in 2012. Ultimately, Avanti Properties came in and bought RC Superior. So they are the fee owner of the land and the capital provider for the project. We're the master developer, but ultimately, I work for Ryan. So he wanted to come and meet all of you and have an opportunity to be involved and hear your thoughts on this next year of FTPs coming forward. And then Jim Kurtzfelden is an attorney in Denver, who's been working on the project for a long time and very involved, so he's going to be coming to all the meetings. And I just wanted to give him a chance to talk about the PD and where we are to date. But in general, you know, we really just want to use this meeting to continue the relationship, make sure we're all on the same page moving forward. I think we all have the same goal of a successful project as quickly as possible. And so we just want to be doing whatever we can and as much outreach, I think communication's important, to make sure that we're all going in the same direction, so.
Okay. I'm already going to ask a question.
Sure.
Did we know that Jim was going to be here? Matt?
No.
Okay.
I'm not legal stuff anyway.
Jim, I would just ask that any reference to the PD or anything else, since we're not represented by council, be through RC or Avanti. You're welcome to stay, you'll miss him, but I'd ask that you not engage any conversations or detail about the PD without my return to the present.
It's not legal. I mean, I'm just going to play.
Jim, it's my request, so I'm just making a request. I find it best practice, and I don't know how my other trustees feel, but I think it's best practice if we're in discussions with somebody and they bring our counsel. We were invited to bring counsel, and my preference would be that we represent with the business owners and not engage with counsel.
Yeah, I'll speak to it a little bit, you know, in terms of why Jim's here and so on and so forth, but I mean, we'll be respectful of that. We're not, this is not intended to be.
I understand. I understand. It's just, if we're given the history, there are some points that we historically have not agreed with, Jim, and without having Kendra or anybody representing our counsel to say, hey, wait a minute, something else. So respectfully, you're welcome back anytime. I would love to have Kendra just here, present, just as a matter of best practice.
Yeah, I'm sorry for not making that clear. I probably should have made it more clear. Jim won't be at all of our meetings. He's been quiet forever.
Correct. Please, please, absolutely. And I didn't mean to be rude or be awkward, but it's just, I find it better.
If the rest of the town board agrees with that and my council, I agree with it, that's fine.
So, Ryan, take it away.
Oh, it's a good, and since it's, since you just brought it up, you know, I'll address it now, but really, as an introductory, I know I met some of you, I don't know, I've met the three of you and look forward to talking and actually getting acquainted. But as Bill mentioned, my name's Ryan Lefkowitz. I'm with a group called Avanti Properties Group. For the most part, you know, we are the equity owner, we're the capital providers, and we lead to RC Superior's assets and the Superior Town Center project. Avanti, just for a little bit of background, if you don't know of us, is really a land investment firm. We're based out of Orange Park, Florida, which is just outside of Orlando, but we invest nationally. We're in 25 markets nationally. This asset actually represents our ninth acquisition in the Denver market, which we consider as Greater Denver. But don't get fooled by that, because most of our assets are not in downtown centers as land investment people. We're typically in areas where new growth is coming or where infill growth is kind of transpiring. The goal of Avanti and the general MO for Avanti is really what you would expect of a real estate investment company. We're looking to generate a return on capital. We currently focus, and probably from, actually, I shouldn't even say currently, I would say from the start, we focus on finding value in assets. So that means either identifying something in a situation where the market is not conditioned for its acceptance today, and it will realize the value going down the road, but it has the underlying elements of value, it's really just a question when market gets to it, or a situation which I would put this site more into, which is a situation where there's a value add that can be realized related to it, and it really just comes down to the availability of capital and the expertise associated with realizing that value. We are, what makes us somewhat unique in the world of real estate finance is that we're very patient. Our money is not, in most situations, when you're dealing with the type of money that we invest, there is typically a three to five-year horizon when it comes to real estate. Investors want a quick return, and they want a high return. With land, you can't really bank on that, for all of the reasons that most commercial banks will not finance land today. It's a high-risk asset, it's illiquid, you're in a situation where if market is not there, you're in a hold pattern. That's just what it is. And, you know, in any situation, and this is a great example of it as well, there's a cultivation period by which, you know, as much as I would like to tell you that everything performs to underwriting, it just doesn't. So we're very patient capital. Our funds are really the resource that we use for investment in our assets, and most of our funds are 12-year funds. Now, that doesn't mean that at year 12, we liquidate, but that means that our targeted range is a 12-year basis. What we typically do is we believe in that period of time, and we underwrite typically for something to absorb in the range of five to eight years, but we believe in a 12-year period that, you know, market, even if there is adjustments to market, we have control, that over that course of time, there will be enough demand in the marketplace to ultimately absorb all of the asset. Now, in the event that we don't get to absorption, what happens at year 12 is we essentially have, we have discretionary control over extending the fund, but we go from what we would consider a hold period to more of a looking to sell period. But we won't sell into a down market, we won't take a loss on a property, we won't develop into something that we don't think is realistic. So that's kind of a good background on us, and if you guys have questions on that, I'll be happy to go into it in more depth. Our involvement in RC Superior really was stimulated by Ranch Capital initially, and we do a lot of capitalization of developers across the country. They brought us into the deal in 2013. I believe we went through probably a nine to 10-month due diligence and refinement process, and ultimately acquired the site in October of 2013. In this case, you may see on some of the documents, it sits in our seventh fund, so if you ever see an entity that's called Asli Seven, that's just the fund entity. Avanti Management Company is the actual management manager, and that is controlled by Avanti Properties Group, so I can tell you with absolute certainty, there are three members of that that have absolute control, and they all reside in our office, so if you see signature blocks, it's going to be coming from there. As it relates to this asset and everything that's related, this deal is a unique deal. It's unique to us, it's unique to the area, and it's unique certainly just in where it sits, because it was sort of a filling the donut, you know, it was the hole in the middle of the donut sort of structure. And the real challenge with it was the capitalization of it. You know, it has so many moving parts, it's such a huge lift, that we had to figure out how to work that, and we did so, you know, really with the town's help. Certainly, I've got to give credit to RC Superior or to Ranch on that, because they were really the ones that formulated the concept, but you had the BVI element, you had, you know, ultimately, a lot of infrastructure that had to go in on the first phase, you had a great deal of site work that had to be done. But ultimately, I think we've got a plan and a design that works very well, and I attribute that to the work that Ranch did with the town and the town staff. From our perspective, I'm not typically sitting at this table, and it's not because I don't like to. I actually come from a development background, and this is part of what I enjoy, I really like doing the developments, being a part of what you're creating and ultimately seeing what the end use is, and what, you know, kids playing in parks and that, you know, sort of feel. It's just from an Avanti standpoint, we really look at ourselves on the capital side. We are based out of Florida, and we can't be in all of our markets. We choose very deliberately to partner with developers that can be local to it, that can be the boots on the ground, that can engage with the local municipalities, and that know the marketplace on a day-to-day basis much more closely. I think, given the scope of this deal and given what, you know, what it means, I think, within the world of Superior, and this is a significant part of this area, it's a significant part of this interchange, and I think this entire region, we pay a little bit more attention to it. It's also, you know, it's, we have our capital into it, and we want to make sure that our investment is there. But as it relates to, you know, Kevin, what you were pointing out before, a lot of the reason why, you know, we obviously have the Ranch guys and Bill or, you know, whoever else would be representative of Ranch that you guys have met, you know, when, they are representative of Avanti. Now, Avanti takes that one step further from a fiduciary responsibility to our investors, which is that we have at all times legal counsel, not for purposes of debate, but just purely from the standpoint of having a third party that, you know, doesn't have an investment interest in the property that we can use objectively. And we locally lean very heavily on Spencer Fain to be that arm for us here, just because we're not in Colorado. So it's, you know, if you were to see Jim here, it's not, it's not because we're looking to have legal representation here, it's purely because we're looking for a third-party representative that can provide us an objective stance. And it doesn't, it really could be a number of different types of consultants, but, you know, for most of our deals, it would be a legal consultant, just because they understand the dynamics of the development. So that's, so I really, I can't emphasize that enough, don't ever feel like we're trying to be, you know, in any way combative or, you know, challenging of anything. If you see Jim's face, he's actually much, he's much equipped in terms of dealing with that, and we deal with it in a lot of our assets, where we just allow our attorneys to deal with a lot of the entitlement things, but it's not intended, I mean, aside from the fact he's an attorney that I would ask you to forgive him for. It could be really any consultant that works for us. So as it relates really to where we are within the project, Avanti's capital investment in here, I mean, I'll be completely, I'll be as open as I can be with respect to it. Avanti has about $35 million into the project as of today. That's not inclusive of liabilities, and we consider Metro District debt, as long as we own the property, a liability to us. So, you know, if you include the Metro District debt that's issued on property that we haven't sold yet, that exposure probably comes up about another $10 million. You know, again, from the finance perspective, everything is return on capital for us. So we consider our investment in here to be fairly substantial at this point, something that we lean on very heavily, and something that we're focused on returning. Now, I'm not worried at all about the value of the asset, it's actually, I think, quite good. I'm sure you guys would agree on that, but there are obviously elements that have to go into place in order to get to that point. And one of the frustrations that we've had on our side is really getting to the point of monetization. You know, all of the upfront commitments that we have on capital, like, we are completely fine with, and we don't by any stretch try to, try to set those aside, or, it's not our intent to renegotiate it, it's not, you know, something we're uncomfortable with, but we do make assumptions based on when we can turn money. And, you know, I will be frank, we have currently about $45 million worth of sales contracts that are to users that we go vertical with construction that, you know, have basically not transpired as fast as we would have hoped, obviously. Now, that is not to say that we're trying to circumvent what the intent of the project is. We want it to be something that, you know, it fits mold of the area and fits into what the town is expecting to see in this development, but you can obviously understand that the consequences of just a year's time on $45 million worth of revenue is significant to our impact, you know, to our returns. So, you know, I think I said this the last time I was here, and I actually produced you, like, we really do see ourselves as a partner to the town on this project. It's not, this is not something that, you know, we consider ourselves third-party. You guys have a significant amount invested in this as a town, because it really, you know, because it sits in that hole of the donut, if you will, and it is such a piece, if you will. We want to be that partner with you guys. We don't want to contest you on it. I really want to figure out how we get it done, how we move it forward. And I know, because I've met with Mark and Kevin on a separate basis, there's opportunities that we could, you know, that the infrastructure that we need to provide to the town, you know, that is scheduled into this project based on our capital return, I mean, very deliberately based on what the economics of the deal were, we want to be able to see those come as quickly as possible. This is really an economic question for us right now. I mean, we are at a point where, you know, every day that passes is an impact on our returns, and we love this market, we love this location, we love this deal, we want to be able to work with you guys to make sure that it performs the way that it has the capability to. So I won't talk, I could talk your off, I'm sure, all day, because I think this is the most beautiful town I've been to in a long time, but I don't, you know, I don't want to cheer yours off and talk capital returns all that much, but if you want to talk to it, I'm happy to do so. I do still feel very strongly that this is, I can't emphasize enough, this deal is a great deal, and we're in a market that has the ability to realize that very strongly. So as a partner, I think RC Superior and Avanti, and certainly Ranch is very interested in seeing this thing through as effectively as we can, and I think that's a large bit of why we asked to just meet with you guys today, is just to present our position, obviously put a new face, put a face to those of you that knew and don't know us. So, thank you for your time, and that, I'm not going to talk anymore unless you want me to.
And I'll take probably 15 minutes, the next 15 minutes or so, and I want to walk through the history, just kind of where we've been and the approvals to date, and go through quickly the high-level bullet points of the PD regulations and the PD vision as it was established in 2013. And I want to talk about tax increment financing, just because I think a lot of people don't understand how that works, or they think that RC Superior ultimately makes money somehow on tax increment financing, which is not the case. So just a high-level sort of teaser on tax increment financing, and then take you through the normal project status and next steps that I typically do. And I think as I'm going through, if you want to ask questions, it's up in dialogue, and we can, you know, do that as much as we can in the next hour that we have until your meeting starts.
Great.
So, let's see. So project entitlements, again, high level, there's basically sort of four groups of documents that govern the project from a land use basis. The overarching document being the PD Plan and Design Guidelines. Those were, there was actually an original plan approved in October of 2012 under a prior owner. That was sort of an office-campus project, I think. I wasn't involved at all, so I haven't looked at it much, but Ranch Capital came in with Randy Goodson in 2012 and put together a PD amendment, which generally kicked off the project in pretty close to its current form and design. And that was Amendment One to the PD, which was approved in August of 2013. And it was amended again shortly thereafter in May of 2014, I think, just to clean up a couple of sort of administrative things that had changed in that first year of property ownership. Amendment number three came two years later. That moved the plaza over a block, so the plaza is now adjacent to the sports table instead of in the middle of the project where it started out. And that was a recommendation from landscape architects, and Ranch went through a whole year process to amend the PD just to move that, and a couple other, Creekview Way moved north about 20 feet, so that Creekview is now directly adjacent to the park, instead of, before, there was a row of townhomes on the north side of Creekview. And then Amendment number four was the latest amendment in April of 2018, which was really just to allow the Tesla dealership on the corner of Marshall and McCaslin. So that's the PD. Alongside the PD, there's a development agreement between RC Superior and the town of Superior. Obviously, it's a very important document, and everyone should be familiar with it. Alongside that is a cost-sharing agreement, which really sets forth the obligations of the town and RC Superior and the metro districts, and how public improvements are paid for, so how we pay for public roads and streetlights and parks and bridges and all those kind of public amenities. And that ties into the discussion that we'll have later. And then the FTP plans, obviously, are the sort of subordinate and more detailed version of the PD as we go through, we're doing FTP plans. So those are the planning approvals and sort of best guides of the project to, again, sort of a high-level orientation of the PD. And I'm going to stand up, that's okay?
So it's really organized into three main planning areas. Planning Area One, this line. Planning Area Two is the main street core, and Planning Area Three is really a lower-density or medium-density residential subdivision. You've seen that, you know, where we started in Block 13 with Wonderland and Remington. The idea is that there's a density gradient going from the higher-density town core, starting with this sort of 30 to 40 unit an acre, you know, three and four-story townhome product, down south towards the existing Rock Creek neighborhood, and the densities will get lower as we go to the south. And you'll see that in the community piece where Remington's proposing single-family, detached, two-story homes along the south property line here. You'll also see a tolls proposed FTP, which will come to you in probably a couple of months, where they're doing more single-family detached homes down in this area, along with some townhomes in the northern part of their project, and we're continuing additional townhomes on Block 25, 14 and 15, that are just slightly lower density than they are on Block 13. So it's really going from 40 units an acre down to, you know, 15 or 20 units an acre as you get closer to the existing residential neighborhood. Planning Area One is really mostly the park. There's the Tesla dealership on the corner here, this is a large park.
Hey, Bill, I'm sorry. For the people that are home watching, can you use your mouse to kind of show where you're describing?
Yeah, I just kind of, yeah. I'll stand up. So Planning Area One is largely the park. There's the Element Hotel here, and the second hotel site to the east of that, and then this is the Starbucks path, it's the very northern part of our PD limit. And then Planning Area Two is, to me, as an urban designer and architect, the most exciting and interesting part is the truly walkable, Main Street downtown-feeling part of the project that we've been focusing on more recently. And this is all envisioned to be walkable, higher-density, mixed-use, with a mix of office, residential, and retail space anchored by the 150,000-square-foot sports table. There's a medical office building here that's already complete and open. And so just walking through the uses real quickly, because this is a pretty important piece of the PD, maybe the most important. The light blue that you see in the core, it was called Flex Space, and that's designed to be truly flexible, walkable, you can kind of do whatever you want, wherever you want, wherever makes the most sense, and responding to market demands at the time. So that can be commercial, residential, live-work, hotel, civil, or education, pretty much anything. The red areas here you see are required to be commercial, and that was intended to provide a buffer up against McCaslin, so you didn't have residences right up against the road. And then also this little pad here that fronts the park is intended to be like a park-serving restaurant, probably. The striped red you see here is also required ground floor commercial with Flex Space above, so it could be residential above. And then the darker blue right along Main Street here is, sorry, is Flex Space with a live-work residential restriction, and that means that 75% of that darker blue can be residential at the ground floor, but 25% of it has to be some sort of commercial. So it's, again, sort of creating this gradient from very commercial, you know, retail required around the plaza, to part retail, possibly part live-work or residential, to, you know, these blocks, you could actually have residential facing the Main Street, although there is a requirement for commercial here, so we'll see how that plays out with the FTP when that comes time. You also have Flex Space coming down Promenade Drive here, kind of continuing that flexibility from the town core down into this residential planning area, and then the yellow is really residential, so that, as I said, that's designed to be a residential subdivision serving this walkable Main Street center. And then the purple is recreation Flex Base. And quickly just highlighting, this is from one of the PD sheets, so this talks about the maximum density that was approved with the PD for the project, which is 466,000 square feet of Flex Space, again, kind of whatever you want it to be, 373, up to 373,000 square feet of office, 150,000 square feet of private indoor recreation, which is really the sports table that's already out there. There was 40,000 square feet approved for a potential school. The Boulder Valley School District had an option to buy Block 16, I think, until roughly a year and a half ago. They decided not to exercise that option because they felt they had better coverage with their existing facilities, so that'll be converted into residential, and an offsetting fee will be paid, up to 500 guest rooms for hotel rooms, and then up to 1,400 residential So the two other things, main things that the PD focuses on, aside from uses, are setbacks and height limits. So this just shows you the setbacks approved of the project, and I'll quickly walk through them again. The darker line along Main Street here is a zero-foot minimum to 10-foot maximum. Again, that's designed to create a really strong street wall, have an urban feel, nice tall buildings up against the street, so that you, you know, you feel like you're in an urban, walkable center. The small dash here is a zero-foot minimum to 15-foot maximum, so that's designed to give a little bit more flexibility along these tertiary streets, potentially a little bit bigger setbacks, but still feeling urban and feeling like a, you know, sort of an urban, urban center. That continued down Promenade, which you see today, if you drive that, with the Wonderland units that have, I think, a two-foot setback, which is in between the zero and the 15-foot maximum. And then the heavier dash down here is a two-foot minimum to eight-foot maximum, which is designed to give a little bit more setback from the street, but it's still, you know, it's not your traditional 20-foot front yards and those sort of wide, you know, pedestrian wide residential streets, it's still a relatively urban, high-density or middle-density development serving this town core. And then the last thing is the height limits, and I'm sorry, this doesn't show up real well, but the area up here, the hotel area, was actually a 90-foot height limit maximum. This area north of Main Street, in addition to Block Eight, is a 65-foot height maximum, which was up to five stories. And then the rest of this area that I'm drawing my hand around, down to about this line, is a 55-foot height limit, or four stories. And then on the very south end, and this kind of ties to the density gradient I was talking about, the very south end is a 32-foot height maximum of maximum three stories. So it goes from 90 at the north end down to 32 at the south end, again, in a sort of So I always think this is kind of interesting, even for me, looking back six years ago at the design vision. This is directly from the PD. So this was showing the vision for Planning Area Two. A lot of these pictures, obviously, are from Boulder, from Pearl Street and that area downtown. They also did have, you know, an image of potential residential mixed in, but a lot of two to four-story walkable residential focused on, you know, the walkable retail feel and good street walls, and then smaller intimate sort of alley Promenade pedestrian spaces. And these were the sketches that the architect at the time actually did specifically for the PD. There's a picture, I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see it. Picture here of the potential Main Street with the plaza on the left side, a little jewel-building retail piece on the plaza, and then some taller residential in the background. Again, this was a sort of a typical three to four-story Flex Space that you could have live-work or straight retail on the ground floor with residential above. And then there's a nice little overview of kind of their vision for the plaza and the surrounding, surrounding residential and Flex Space. Then looking at the design vision for residential, you can see this was a sketch done for the project that showed three-story townhomes on a walkable. project that showed three-story townhomes on a walkable area. This could be an example of the Promenade area. This could be an example of one of the private blocks. I think from the concept plan presentation that we saw last week or two weeks ago with Thrive, you can see their architecture is, I think, doing a pretty good job of bringing this vision to life. Same kind of forms, shed roofs, three-story, nice articulation with balconies. And then some of these images showed the two-story homes. These look pretty similar to what you'll see with Toll Brothers coming forward with the single-family detached two-story stuff. I thought this image was very appropriate for the Thrive proposal for Block 26, which you'll see, maybe the new members haven't seen, but the current, or the members who were here three months ago have seen that. But you see the wall, the great separation from, this would be Discovery, up to the two-story townhome that Thrive's proposing there. So it's, you know, it's almost, I think our architecture is a little bit less traditional than that, but very similar development pattern. And then this is interesting. This is actually a picture of Midtown. This is the exact two-story, single-family detached product that Toll is going to be proposing on Planning Area Three. So it's nice to see that was always included in the PD also.
What is that image with the blue and yellow houses?
And I don't know where that is, but again, it's just showing potential character. I think it's...
For which area would that be?
This is all for just residential in general.
Okay.
Throughout the project. So it could be Planning Area Three, it could be Planning Area Two. That's probably more appropriate for Planning Area Three. But I think it's intended to show...
That one just looks a little more traditional than the others. I wasn't sure where it was planned to go.
Yeah, and those would be single-family detached, but they're still relatively small lots. I think it's showing sort of how these narrower lots can look and feel with pedestrian area in front. So any questions on the PD and sort of that whole setup at all yet? So next I'll quickly talk about tax income financing. So tax income financing is a public financing method which uses future incomes generated by private development inside the project to fund the installation of public improvements today. So it's basically taking a loan against the future tax income of the project to fund public improvements. And this is used nationwide. It's been used in Colorado for a long time via metro districts. But the idea generally illustrated is, if you look at this little orange line at the bottom, that would have been the assessed value of the real estate under the existing agricultural zoning that it was. So if nothing ever happened in estate agriculture, the orange line is what you could expect that to be assessed at and ultimately would result in taxes being paid based on that assessed value. The idea is that with additional development, like downtown Superior and this kind of a density, that drives a lot of extra assessed value because you're building 1,400 homes and a bunch of office space, and all of that's very expensive and all of that ultimately has an owner who pays property taxes. So this green area illustrates sort of the best-case scenario. If you look at this project and say year one was 2012, 2013, best-case scenario, we could have expected to be building infrastructure for the first couple of years and then see a spike with, you know, a good amount of activity coming in, whether that's residential or office or retail or whatever. I think this is a realistic, sort of optimistic base case for the assessed property value and what that would look like over time. Ultimately, in 25 years, the town would be collecting, obviously, a huge variance over what the original property taxes would have been. So all of that cash in the 25 years that's paid to property taxes in tax income financing can be, you can actually raise a bond against that and use that money to put public improvements in, like parks and roads and bridges and all these things. So again, private developers come in, they invest in building new homes and commercial buildings. Those new buildings generate additional tax revenue from the project, and then that tax revenue is used to fund construction, roads, parks and eligible costs. And this is getting a little bit tying back to the cost-sharing agreement, if you read that. So just in general, again, to generally illustrate where we are today, we're roughly starting year seven here in 2019, seven years after the project was approved. And it's nobody's fault necessarily, but to Ryan's point, things have not gone quite as fast as we could have hoped. And so where we might have been at assessed value of, you know, around here, we're probably about half of what we potentially could have been. And I just want to show this because it illustrates how important timing is to the project and to the project's ability to raise public dollars to pay for public improvements like parking structures and parks and roads and all the rest of the things we have to pay for. Ultimately, at some point, if this goes too far and doesn't start climbing fast enough, the resulting area of available tax base that we can use to build public improvements becomes so small that it doesn't actually offset the costs of putting all the public improvements in, and that becomes a big problem for everybody. So that's just illustrating the timing importance. So where we are today, the yellow shows all of the approved FDPs for the project, for the project to date. Most of this is public improvements that have been approved. The private improvements are the Element Hotel here, the Tesla in the corner here, the medical office building, sports table, and then the Wonderland in Remington, Block 13. And then Discovery. Discovery's actually not a part of the project, but I showed it just for reference. The rest of this is basically public roads, detention ponds, park facilities, and more park, and then the buffer landscaping down towards the south. So where we are right now with this approval, in the next year, if all goes well and we can work with staff and have your support, we'd like to bring FDPs for all of the green in 2019. So you can see where the project is poised and how much work we have to do in the next 12 months. All these people, all of this land is under contract with buyers who are ready to start construction on homes or mixed-use or retail, and it's basically just contingent on your
Bill, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Is that realistic?
Yeah. If we, again, if we can get through the approval process, yes, everyone of these people will close and start construction as soon as it's approved.
And in terms of actually getting through just the work involved of actually reviewing all these applications, we have enough meetings in 2019 to actually consider all these?
More of a question for the town manager, I hope so.
Well, a number of them are already in process and have been for a while, so that helps with the timeline. Some of the ones that are just starting...
And I'll walk through them all.
Yeah, the Main Street Core is one, the one next to the Element Hotel. We haven't received those applications yet, so... But the others that you see on there, I believe we, they're at some point in process.
And I have target dates for all of them, so we can, none of them are double-scheduled, but, you know, obviously open to feedback.
So, Bill, what's changed? I mean, it started off slowly, but it looks like it's accelerating. What's been the catalyst?
You know, a big piece was getting a lot of the infrastructure in. So Main Street, which is, you know, beautiful improvement with the brick, everyone loves it, brick and lights and all the way that that's done, that wasn't installed until beginning of last year, I think, a year and a half ago-ish. And so, you know, that, before that, there wasn't any real access to the project. And these, you know, these master plans happen all the time. No one believes it's going to happen until they see dirt moving and things going in. And we started with Block 13. This was approved, I think, three years ago, and they're finishing construction on those homes right now, which, again, puts us in a little bit of a precarious situation because we want to keep rolling. We don't want to have a gap where we don't have any homes for sale because, you know, we sold out of these and we're not done building the new ones yet. But, you know, those only delivered, started delivering a year, basically the same time, about a year and a half ago. The sports table was really the first private development. That didn't open for business until 2016, I think. So there was the first couple of years getting the bonds, documents together, trying to figure out how to finance the project. I honestly wasn't here for that, so I can't speak too intelligently to it, but I know there was, there was obviously some setup that happened between the time that the PD was approved in 2013 and the time the sports table opened and Main Street opened in 2016. But since 2016, it's been, you know, obviously a lot of interest. We've signed all of these contracts for sales and everyone's, you know, very excited to move forward. We've also done a couple of bigger deals. The first, the first deal was the sports table. The first home residential deal was Block 13, which is really just pretty small. It's like 110 homes of the 1,400 total. Since then, we've worked with not only local builders, Remington, Thrive, but also Toll Brothers, who's this entire, you know, 300-home area, which is a much bigger deal. So it's easier to get it done faster, obviously. So that's where we are.
As far as Blocks Two, Five and Eight goes, given that those aren't targeting 2019 approval, is there, does Rank have a vision for what those will be, given that they are designated as Flex Space, or is the intent to wait and see how other things perform before deciding?
It's a little bit dependent on the market and who comes, you know, wanting space. It's a little bit tricky the way that the PD is organized because you have these commercial requirements up against the casin frontage, which means they can't just be residential blocks. The easiest thing for us to sell is residential. There's a, you know, there's a housing shortage in Colorado nationally, really, so home builders are anxious to get, building homes, and so it's easy for us to sell residential. These probably, at least, at least that edge of the block can't be residential. It probably makes the most sense for these to be some kind of built-to-suit office, but the office won't come until this, the rest of this project is more built out and feels like a place that they want to be, you know. It's most likely, probably best-case scenario is a built-to-suit office for a tech tenant coming out of Boulder and looking for a bigger, fancier, newer space that they can, you know, it's hard to find that kind of space in Boulder.
Sure.
And so that would be great, but they won't come until the rest of this is done and there's more homes for their employees to live in, and they just, they'd only be the first in.
Right.
Block Five, we've talked about potentially theater, which I am working with some theater operators. There's nothing done there yet, so we can't really talk about it or promise anything, but I think it would be great. It'd be an awesome anchor for the other retail in the project. We also have entitlements for another hotel that could be a great, great entrance to the project on Marshall here. And then we probably do need some space for a shared public parking facility to help be able to park all these different uses and benefit from the metro district being able to provide a public, shared parking facility. So the vision is really built-to-suit office and/or retail on Blocks Two and Eight, and then a theater, a parking garage and a hotel on Block Five, but that's...
Up in the air.
It totally depends on third-party developers that come to us saying they want to build something.
Okay.
So, quick question, more comment as opposed. Laura started to hit on something I was thinking about as well. So as we move forward, looking towards the southern end of the Flex Space area into Planning Area Three, all of that is turned into residential below that. And what we're looking at, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but it looks like we're looking at both residential on top in Planning Area Two with retail on the bottom. I think one of our biggest concerns, at least my biggest concern must be for everybody else, is knowing that this is going to be a commercial core that drives off our tax base moving forward if we continue to move more and more with residential into that Flex Space, and that gives me a concern at least. So I want to make sure, I mean, I understand that you're saying whoever comes and brings ideas to you, but to make sure we're getting balance in with that Flex Space because we don't want to see too much of it going towards residential, make sure we have that balance.
Yeah, and, you know, it's actually, I think it's important that the residential be a part of it. If you look at commercial developments like Belmar, for example, and these other sort of pseudo-walkable malls, as I call them, you know, I come from a retail development background and I've done projects like that, I think it's important to bring residential into that retail core to make it active on weekends and nights because when you, like, you go walk Belmar on a weeknight or even a weekend, and it's kind of, it's kind of empty because all the residential's off at one end, it's too far away. So I think it's important to bring residential into that project. Yes, we will be pushing to have, to have retail on the frontage where it makes sense, but ultimately this isn't a regional mall either, so there's not going to be 500,000 square feet of retail, which is...
Correct.
Which, if you did this all as retail, that probably would be 500,000 square feet of retail. So there's room, is all I'm saying.
Yeah. And I think, if I'm remembering correctly, I believe the east, easternmost edge of Planning Area Three down next to Highway 36, that's now Flex Space as well. And that was a compromise well to turn that into Flex Space. I mean, it seems that there's been more flexibility given to the project. I'm sure we get through on residential land, but I want to make sure we don't lose sight of what's needed.
True. And if I, if I could just speak to that real quickly, Ed. When you define residential, do you include multifamily for rent as residential? From a tax base, it's commercial. And I'm not, I'm not saying it's not a residential purpose. It is certainly residential purpose. And I think to Bill's point, you have to create a critical mass in order to assure, ensure the success of commercial in the retail sense.
Yeah.
But I think from the town's perspective, just on revenue, the multifamily is not taxed.
It is taxed.
Oh, it's taxed residential. I apologize. So my, you know, it really comes down, and this is speaking purely from a commercial development perspective, you do have some limitations on this site as it relates to creating a huge dynamic Main Street in that it's essentially a one-sided road, right? I mean, not a one-sided road, it's a dead-end road.
Right.
That puts a premium on having the built-in, you know, critical mass that I would say in terms of just people walking the sidewalk, the activity and everything else. I would, I would think it would be very difficult to develop the whole thing just as a commercial center without having that sort of level of activity unless, unless it was just intended to be an office park.
Well, and don't get me wrong, that's not necessarily what I'm suggesting either. So I want to make sure as we go forward that there's balance with the Flex Space use rather than continuing to push in, I mean, just, I heard you say with Blocks Two, Five and Eight, but since we don't have anything to find in there, knowing that we need to continue to fill our tax base for the town.
Yeah, and just a couple more. You know, one thing is that retail kind of nationally now is moving towards smaller boutique experiences. Even the big chains are starting to brand themselves as smaller boutiques because people want to be connected to small business, to their neighborhood. And so, you know, you don't, you don't want this to be a big-box retail center. It could be, but that's not at all what the vision has been designed as. And so just thinking about, you know, I think residential's important. The other, the other piece, just kind of speaking to the original vision, is the project, you know, was, the PD was approved for up to 1,400 units. This whole area, Planning Area Three, as proposed with the toll, is, the number's shifting a little bit, but it's around 600, 650 max. I think it's around, I think it's 600 total units. So that leaves 800 units that the PD envisioned going somewhere, and they, and there's no other place to put them except for Planning Area Two. So the PD envisioned 600 units, 700 units down here and 700 units in the town core. I don't think we'll actually get to that full...
Up to 1,500.
Right.
It's up to, yeah. I'm just channeling Rida for you.
And I, and I, I don't even, I'm not even going to fight that because I really don't think we're going to get there just based on the density and what you would have to build to get there. You'd have to build five-story, very dense stuff in this whole town core to get to that maximum entitlement. So I'm not saying that we definitely aren't, but it would be, you know, we likely won't. But just think about that. There's, you know, there was always residential envisioned to be in that town core, which I think is important, getting eyes on the street and activity at all times. There's, and we try to design uses that have 24/7 activation so that residential uses are active in the evenings and on weekends, retail uses are active during the day, on kind of weekends mostly, but also some, to some extent during the week. And then office uses bring that, you know, daily weekday use, and so you want to have people on the street at all times.
Yeah.
So just quickly walking through the pieces that have gotten done, and then I'll walk you through the next target timeline. The hotel parcel, we sold that in February of '17, and they're opening in April of 2019. And they're wrapping up construction right now, and it's looking, looking great. The medical office building, we sold that land in March of 2017, right about the same time as the hotel, and they, they opened a bit faster in first quarter of this last year, 2018. This is a picture from today of the hotel progress, so they're getting cladding up and windows on. Like I said, they expect to open in April, so that's going to be exciting. That's the other side of the building. FDP Phase One, this is the Main Street that was completed, actually 100% signed over to the town or accepted by the town in February of this year. Village Green Park is under construction, but it is really close to being done. Target completion is this month. When, we'll work with the town on acceptance and getting that open to the public and hopefully do some kind of event. We haven't quite figured that out yet, but that's coming. Couple of pictures of the Village Green Park, that's the gazebo at the south end with seating areas and barbecue facilities here. Got a children's playground at the north end of the park. And then that's sort of from the middle of the park, looking back at Block 13 with, this is the edge of Block 25 where that Wonderland product was approved.
So even though it's not finished, does it actually open for use? Can people go out there?
It's not open to the public quite yet. There's a couple of, we got to get the power on and finish a couple of papers here and there, so we're, we're trying to wrap that up by the end of the year.
And there will be some sort of event that goes along with the opening, you were saying?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could we involve our CAPS committee in helping to plan that?
I'd love to. So then block 13 and 25, 117 homes are going to be done by June of 2019, that's what I was talking to. We don't want to end up in June of 2019 with no more homes to sell, because that kind of creates a gap and, and problem for people who want to buy homes in the project. And then Discovery Parkway is now paved and open, and we're finishing up the sidewalks and landscaping on that around the end of this year also. This is a picture of the Wonderland Town Homes on, this is Promenade Drive, and all the landscaping and trees are in, in the front of that now. And then this is a picture of the courtyard on the inside of that block, this is the Remington three-story product, which is served by a pedestrian courtyard in the middle of the block. And if you haven't been out there, I recommend going and walk it, it's, it's fun to see in person. So then moving forward, so we've got, the first thing that you'll see is Remington's proposal on block 25, so this is directly behind those Wonderland units on Promenade. And it's 18 single-family homes and 57 hillside townhomes that step down from the hill that Discovery Office Park is on, down into the project. That FTP was submitted originally in October of 2017, we've been working with staff since then to, to get her ready to show planning commission into you. So I believe we're on a schedule for planning commission next week on the 18th, and then we'll see you on January 14th, hopefully for approval of that next tranche of, of townhomes and single-family homes from Remington. We're also working on Remington's blocks 26 and 27, this is the triangle block down here. That FTP was submitted in April of this year, and we're targeting a planning commission hopefully in February, followed by town board in March. And that would be concurrent with Thrive's proposal on the same block, so the intent is to try to show you this whole block, sort of as a single piece, even though it's different builders and different FDPs. That, that new FTP, so Thrive was the group who came through last year, ultimately got denied in, in July, and sort of come back with a revised proposal. They're breaking that proposal out into two pieces, so the first piece is, is just this 21 homes on block 26. And again, that was submitted in, oh, sorry, that was the last one. That was submitted in October, and we're targeting planning commission in February, followed by town board in March, concurrent with the Remington stuff behind it. Then Toll Brothers is a large project area, and it's the entire southeast corner of the, of the site, from Village Green Park down to the buffer and the freeway. So I've got a copy of their FTP, we're going back and forth just on internal review right now, we'll probably get that submitted to the town in the next week or two, and work with staff. I would guess that gets, hopefully to a planning commission meeting in early summer, followed by a town board meeting in, in July. And this, I've got a note here, so that, that would make a total of 601 homes in total in Planning Area Three. I think that number might come down by a couple, because Thrive's new proposal is less dense on 14 and 15, so that's probably 596 homes or something like that in all Planning Area And then following Toll Brothers, Thrive is coming back with a revised proposal for blocks 14 and 15, these are the blocks that flank Village Green Park and complete the Planning Area Three. We did the concept plan for that last time I was here, in, in the end of November. We'll submit that FTP in January and target a planning commission after, directly after Toll Brothers, in July, followed by town board by the end of summer. And then the last piece, I think, is the, the mixed-use residential and, and retail town core on block six, seven, nine, 10, and 11. Like I said, this is a very exciting piece, this is the, sort of the heart of the community, and very, very important when it comes to providing that walkable retail and restaurant space on the ground floor, mixed with more residential around and behind it. And Ranch Capital is actually partnering with another third-party developer right now to bring this to fruition separately from our piece of the master development, so I'll be involved on both sides of that. We'll be showing you a concept plan first quarter of next year, with an FTP likely in April, and I would target that to be immediately after all the Planning Area Three stuff, shooting for a planning commission in September and a town board by the end of the year.
Who's your developer partner there?
That's Morgan.
Sorry, it's...
Morgan Holdings.
Thank you.
So Bill, this, this piece, I agree, is really key to, you know, defining that whole downtown, and we've, we've been talking about it for years, just speaking to the, you know, the momentum of the, of the project. Why is, why has this piece been such a challenge to get, to get to this point?
Well, it's the most complicated piece that we're doing so far, and that's always the case. Urban, walkable, mixed-use developments are complicated by nature, and they always are. So it's taken time to find the right partner on that. You know, it's also, like I talked about, the project really has only been a real place with infrastructure and kind of ready for development for the last year or so, and during that whole time, we've been working with potential partners to try to figure out, you know, a deal and a, and a partner who has the same vision and wants to see this developed the right way. Plenty of people want to just develop this as a residential neighborhood, which we don't think that's, you know, in keeping with the PD and in keeping with your vision, so, you know, we've discouraged those people. The residential, like I said, is very easy to sell, there's a housing shortage and builders are excited to come in and find land and deliver homes, especially in a location like this. So residential's been easy. The hotel is a single-use hotel pad deal, again, easy. The sports table was a complicated deal, because it was that whole tax increment financing piece, but it was an existing user who was on-site, the Old Valley Hockey Foundation, who was ready to, to go. So it really just speaks to the complexity and, and the readiness of the project's infrastructure now to accept that kind of development. Because before, it would have been a little bit of a leap to jump in and do this project without seeing Main Street and without seeing all these, you know, all that infrastructure.
If I could take that just one step further to the economic side of it, the, everybody in every city that we go to wants the high-density commercial, they want the revenue generator, and I get it. From a commercial development standpoint, it's always the last thing to go in, and it's pure and simple, based on where is the user that, that is going to be focused on making that successful work? And when you get into that town core and you start looking at, you know, the capital costs associated with construction there, and you're dealing with, you know, deals that are going to be 60, 80, maybe $100 billion of, of capital to construct, there's not a lot of flexibility in there if you can't get those big revenue generators occupied. So, you know, I think related to the timing, to be able to go out to market, and, and believe me, it's, it's always kind of been there, and we've had people that have approached us on it in different forms and fashions, probably for the last three, four years. It was a very deliberate process in terms of finding the right fit that we could go under contract with, who understood, you know, the intent of the entire overarching project, and were willing to make the, you know, the economic commitment necessary to get that thing standing the way it needs to be. You know, I knew town staff met with a few, we shortlisted a group of candidates, and town staff met with some of them, and there were very, very different concepts, if you will, in terms of what they wanted to see that town core developed out of. And the biggest point of backlash that, that we got in terms of negotiation was how much retail will this really support? It's really a market question, and when you get into the sort of investment that's necessary and the sort of groups that go in there, you got to make sure that, that you've got that, that critical mass that's going to serve it, otherwise you're, you're going to be in a lot of trouble when you get it constructed.
So that's all I've got, so we're open to any questions. Like I said, you know, we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward. I would love to get all of the green area through the process and under construction by the end of next year, because that would, you know, build the project out in a big way. And obviously, there's going to be some phasing once people get started on construction. That Toll Brothers project is probably going to build out over a five-year time span, something like that. So, you know, we're...
What about the rest of Planning Area Three? Do you think that that's going to be the, the part that takes the longest in terms of the build-out, just because of the size?
Uh, it's a good question. I, I think the, like I said, the build-to-suit office, unless we get somebody, I, I don't think the build-to-suit office will come until the rest of that Main Street is developed, and so we, you know, best-case scenario, if we get the Main Street stuff approved by the end of this next year, 2019, that would probably deliver finished space by the end of '21, two years. And at that point, it might become an attractive location for an office user to come and scout, so then we'd be talking about another two to three years to get an office building built.
You're talking about on, along McCaslin?
Yeah. So that, you know, so that total time span, best-case scenario is probably five to six years to see that whole Main Street area built out, and that's best case, you know? So it's sort of the same timing in the south for those five or six years, the halls will be putting up other residential, and that should track to roughly the same kind of a, kind of a delivery for the final pieces.
So we're looking at 20, 24, 20, 25?
Before it totally 100% built out?
For, for planning Area Three?
Yeah, sounds about, sounds about right.
Yeah.
And that's pending any giant market turn-down, or, you know, who knows what's going to happen, but...
And what about Planning Area Two?
Same kind of, same kind of project. So on the, on the project that we're working on, five, six, seven, nine, or like, just six, seven, nine, 10, and 11, if that gets approved in 2019, that would be delivered in 2021, it'll take about two years to, to get built.
Okay.
The rest of it is just a function of how fast users come and find spaces. If we get that approved and immediately two office users and a theater are like, "I want in," then, you know, if that's best-case scenario, that, that might deliver by '23, '24 type of, type of timeframe. Anything that we get approved will take roughly two years between the time they get it approved and the time it opens for business, you know, with some variation.
How about the, the bridge on Marshall and Parks One and Two?
So that is a discussion, ongoing discussion. Right now, the cost-sharing agreement has language that basically ties RC Superior's funding of a $10 million obligation that pays for those, the bridge and the parks, to the metro district's raising a net aggregate of $50 million in bond proceeds. Right now, the metro district's raised somewhere around 19 million, I think, did you check that number? I think that's right.
It was 22.
22? Somewhere, somewhere around 20 million, and we can check the number. When that 20 becomes 50, then we are obligated to give you the 10 or immediately install those parks and, and that bridge. To the extent we want to talk about mutually beneficial options that could accelerate that, we're totally open to working with you and tell us, you know, give us ideas.
What's your schedule right now on an additional run, and how much would you be raising?
The earliest we can do anything is the end of next year, just under the existing terms of the existing bonds. And even that is somewhat limited in scope, I need to, it's one, it's on my list to talk to our bond counsel about what that looks like and how much it can be. So that's, that's where that is, I need to work on it over the next quarter.
Is that long, Eric? That's completely driven by how much is standing?
Yes.
That's part of the frustration that, that the Avanti guys have on this, is, you know, we've got to get up to a tax base for the same purposes that you want to get the tax base up.
Yeah.
So I want to, so I have a similar question, but I want to separate the, the bridge on Marshall from the Parks One and Two, from the $10 million related to the bond.
Okay.
So when will the infrastructure be in place to build the bridge over Marshall? Ask us.
I don't know the answer. I would, you know, being involved in the development of block six, seven, nine, 10, 11, I would love it to be as soon as possible. RC Superior...
I would simplify the statement, I would just say, look, it'll be in, it'll be scheduled and intact when the, the tax base can support it.
Yeah. Which is, yeah.
I mean, it could be two years.
So while I appreciate the dialogue around time, the question was, you know, hey, when will we be ready for Parks One and Two? That got lumped into the response for the release of the bonds of the 10 million. For record, the 10 million is not necessarily going in its entirety to One and Two, the 10 million needs to be discussed by this board now, so I just don't want the 10 million's going to One and Two. It's for this group to discuss, and for, I believe, the Williams, or for us, I'm sure they agree.
Yeah.
A handful of other questions. I know it's outside the scope of your project, but Discovery Parkway, do you know, and I'm sure you guys do know, what's the, what's the, they're obviously building a bunch of dirt, same subcontractors, I'm sure, what's the timeline on that? Do you know, do you have any update there?
I actually don't, no, the road's open.
For the residential?
Yeah.
So they, they have two buildings per, pulled for four units, so I think there's a total of 22 units, I believe, so. They'll move pretty quickly.
Yeah, it looked like they were starting, not quite foundations, but probably close to foundations, okay.
When you talked about the parking garage, likely on blocks five, maybe even block six, you used a modifier, probably? Just want to ask you to reconsider that modifier, probably, I think the parking garage is a requirement, so I don't think you intended to use that parking, I think it was in reference to the location, not the certainty of a parking garage.
I don't think there's a required parking garage under the PD terms.
I think there's a required parking garage, so.
You'll have to point to language.
Right, right, thank you. Can you, okay, do you have a point of view around the sports table? And whether or not, I, I, so I, I think it's great advice to walk around the new construction, it's beautiful, it's exactly what we want, it does, it's very appealing to the eye. Sports Table is already, in my view, there are elements of the sports table that feel gated and concrete, in my view. As an architect, as somebody who's trying to bring builders, do you have an opinion around the sports table?
So the sports table was done before I was involved in the project, obviously. I don't want to say anything bad about the sports table, because they're a great anchor and a great partner. I, I think it's, you know, ultimately, it's a great use, it drives a lot of traffic, and that's much more important than, than the little detail on the tower that I would have changed, but, but I think it's, I think it's a great use, it's, it's, you know, it does a nice job announcing the project. I think with additional signage, which we'll, we're working on an additional master sign program for the project, which will include a monument, bigger monument of Higgins 36, I, I think that, that frontage is, is a good frontage and provides a nice anchor for the project.
I, I know your predecessors were generous with the sports table and the financing element of it, so I think they, not asking for additional generosity, but your, your architectural expertise may be...
Well, and to some extent, there's, I mean, there's that piece in front of the sports table, or the entrance, which was supposed to be a full facility, which hasn't happened yet, so that's a big blank wall, which obviously was not ever supposed to be a big blank wall. At some point, there will be something developed there, which will completely change that whole frontage. You know, I, I think, I think the other parts of the building actually are, are pretty nice, the donings and the windows and all that, and I think it was a good job to sort of force that on them at the time, to have those windows fronting the street. That one piece, yes, something needs to go there, something will eventually go there, and we'll be involved in the design of that when it does.
Okay. And my last question, but it's not related to this property, so I want to give people a chance to, maybe if you have time, you can comment. I understand you pulled permits, or there's going to be some permits related to the second half of the property, so I would like you to just give an update on that, assuming we have no, after we conclude the discussions around downtown, because that's what's been noticed in their time.
Sure, okay. And to Ryan's point, so the, the timing is critical on that, on that bond process at the end of 2019. If we have all of this approved, because the bonds are basically a loan based on a future certainty of tax revenues, so right now, they're really based on what's built out there, which is what's approved. If we can, the more we can get approved over the next 12 months, the more foreseeable tax revenue there is to loan against, and the bigger our bonds can be at the end of next year. So that just, it just illustrates how important these approvals are to projects' ability to raise public financing to pay for all the parks and bridges. Again, I would love to start construction on those January of '20, if the money is there to do it. So we just need to get through the, get through the process, and again, we want to be doing projects that, that, you know, you, you think are, are consistent with the PD and good for the project and good for the town, so let me know how we can do that.
In terms of, you know, getting things approved quicker?
Yeah.
You know, I guess my general advice would be, you know, for, at least for the stuff that's coming on Planning Area Three, and the southernmost, you know, section, like, let's make sure that we're paying attention to the design guidelines, and paying attention to the restrictions in the PD, you know, respecting the agreements with respect to the buffer zone and the backyards and all of the stuff that has already transpired over the past several years.
Yeah.
And as long as we don't rehash, you know, the things that we've already... And as long as we don't rehash, you know, the things that we've already gone through, I think hopefully that'll make it a smooth process.
And we're doing our best. The height limits certainly respect the original line. Toll Brothers will be proposing a 32-foot, two-story detached product in that whole area that was 32-foot height limit, along with you saw Thrive's changing to their two-story product in those areas too. So I really hope we don't have any problems, and I, you know, we're gonna do our best to not ask for any variances and hopefully it's a smooth process.
And just to that point, I think it's critical, and this is a big reason why I wanted Jim here, we're having Jim review every FTP before it gets into the hands of your staff for exactly that reason. You know, I mean, a lot of the FTP preparation comes through our engineer and a lot of it comes in through our users. And, you know, given the fact that RC Superior's name is the one on the application, we wanna make sure, we're not intending to circumvent what was already established on the front side. I mean, that's the reason why we went to the work that we did to establish it on the front side. The only way I can ensure that is to make sure that I've got somebody who understands the document and can go and review it. That's why I think it's really critical that he's the one at these meetings, not me. You know, I mean, Bill's gonna be here and he can talk design until you guys are blue in the face, but I really think, you know, whether it's the town's attorney and Jim engaging directly on it, whatever it happens to be, I don't want the Town Board to be looking at the technical elements related to whatever product is going in there and debating whether or not it adheres to what the PD intended. I'd rather have that be done on a legal basis because it's, I'm not an attorney, I can't read the documents and tell you what they are. It's a little bit different for your situation. But that's the reason why I think it's really critical and really why, you know, we're going to, going forward, have Jim in the presentation when those come to you guys. Those technical elements need to be sidetracked because this timeframe issue, from what I see, is being contributed to by virtue of technical aspects being debated that aren't necessarily relevant, I think, to the zoning and to the intent of the PD. If it comes architectural, you know, guideline, I mean, shame on us if we present an FTP application that doesn't adhere to the elements of the PD. That's on us.
Well, I don't necessarily think that there's a problem, you know, just in the abstract of doing something that deviates from the PD in general, so long as it's not something that we're catching, you know, at the last minute in a board meeting, right? If you are making a strategic decision and you want to present something and you go to the town staff and everybody's aware of it, and then it comes in front of us, you know, we're the quasi-judicial board, and then we can either approve it or deny it, you know, based on our discretion. And that's a calculated risk for you. If you don't want us to have that discretion, then you do something that's...
Well, and that's the idea. We're not, we're just not gonna come forward with any...
Presenting it as a defined variance.
Right.
And that's on us.
But I think that that's what happened in the past, is that there were certain things, at least the impression that I got was things were being caught basically at the last minute by the board. And the impression that that gave was...
Yeah, we don't wanna end up there again. We're gonna do our best to identify any, anything that is a touch point, even if we don't think it's a PD variance, but if it's something we talked about before, bring it up in the narrative with staff. Our intent is to give you projects that are exactly meeting the PD guidelines so that you feel comfortable approving them in a single meeting so we can get through the rest of these FDPs this year and raise a big bond at the end of next year and get all the parks in.
We can't have sensitive. I mean, it's really critical. For one, you're in a market right now that is unprecedented, probably. I mean, you can make the argument that it was this strong in 2005, but you are in a very strong market right now. And if you want values at the maximum level to, you know, and certainly the velocity that I think we all wanna see, we gotta get in there. So I'm not suggesting this from the standpoint of asking the Board of Trustees to circumvent the process. That's not the intent. But I can tell you, you know, having a denial and an FTP approval is a huge shot to the effectiveness of this project. Now, you know, again, I'm not denying that there were elements of that FTP application that should never have been put in front of you. That's probably a fair statement. But the denial in and of itself literally translates to a year, you know, costing us a year when you take development time, getting the builders mobilized, getting their sales active. I mean, it's a year's impact towards having those units up and standing in the community. And that, that's, you know, if there's one thing you can take away from today, that's really, you know, that's the thing that on my side really just, I used to have a full head of hair. It really keeps me out at night. So, you know, I mean, that's where we're coming from in terms of really trying to focus on timing.
Matt, can I ask you a question? So we've heard a very ambitious timeline. Do we have the staff to be able to review all these FDPs within the year along with the other FDPs that come forth within that?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's always an issue for us. I mean, we will get them in, we process them in a timely manner, but if, you know, we get, if we were to get four applications in tomorrow, it's gonna take time to get through. We also use, utilize consultants as we need them to help with that process.
I would appreciate the update. I would ask, too, that the regular updates continue. I know at the point in time we were on for monthly updates, and I think towards the end of last year, we kind of fell off that schedule a little bit. I think that is...
There wasn't much happening at the end of last year.
But still, I think an update, a regular update that we kind of get used to seeing you on a regular basis, and even if the update is no update, that's an update. But I think, given the velocity of things, we're gonna have plenty of updates, and I think that's gonna be key to us all staying up to speed and being able to respond to...
Of course, happy to do it. As you can see from the schedule, I'll be here every couple weeks, so...
Well, and to echo that, I think also just the calendar view of what's coming when is really helpful. If there's any way to get that in a one pager, that could be really useful.
Okay.
Okay. Do you wanna address Kevin's question?
Yeah, so tell us quickly in a few minutes about what you're... So Second Avenue Superior Properties is a Ranch Capital entity that Avanti's not a part of, so it's separate from RC Superior, obviously. We sold Rogers Farm to Boulder Creek Neighborhoods a couple of months ago. And Boulder Creek Neighborhoods are also doing the Anderson property, as you know. So they're, and we've been working with them to execute the feedback that we got six months or 12 months ago when we went through that whole sort of potential PD process and talked about just leaving lower density up against Second Avenue and doing higher-density townhomes up against McCaslin. So they're working on all of the approvals related to that. It's really in their court now, and they're the builder, they own the property that they're starting to build on. So I don't, honestly, I'm not involved in their permanent process or their, to the extent that any public input or discretionary approval is required, obviously, they'll be setting up meetings and going through that whole process, I think, for a PD, at least on part of the property.
County still has you guys recorded as the owner there, so maybe there's just a little late in the paperwork?
We're the owner on the east half of it. Second Avenue Superior Properties is Boulder County is the owner on the...
You mean, uh...
Boulder Creek. I'm sorry. Boulder Creek. What did I say?
Boulder County.
Sorry. Boulder Creek Neighborhoods is the owner on the western...
Yeah, they still have you guys as the two blocks on the west side.
They closed a month ago, probably, maybe two months ago, so it takes a good...
County can be slow. I'd give it 90 days.
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Thanks very much for the time.
Thanks, everybody.
It is a pleasure. Superior Property Foundation meeting.
Yeah, the board needs to go to the conference room or something quick.